Good evening, welcome to this Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, meeting of the Raymore Planning and Zoning Commission. And now that you've just gotten comfortable, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let me remind Commissioners to speak into the microphone and make sure the green light is on so we can get a record. And we'll call roll. Commissioner Wiggins.
Present.
Commissioner Armstrong.
Present.
Commissioner Bowie. Commissioner Crane.
Present.
Commissioner Pfizer.
Present.
Commissioner Peterman.
Present.
Commissioner Urquia.
Oh, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Catch me on my toes. Mayor Turnbow. Commissioner Faulkner is present. We do have a quorum this evening. No personal appearances. One item on the consent agenda, approval of minutes from our February 5th, 2019, meeting. And unless anyone has concerns about that, I'd entertain either a motion to approve minutes or to accept consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for, sorry, the approval of minutes on the consent agenda from February 5th, 2019, meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Wiggins, second by Commissioner Urquia, to approve minutes from February 5th, 2019, meeting and accept the consent agenda. I don't have city attorney to keep me straight, do I? Okay. All those in favor, raise a hand, please. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Sorry, I ran out of fingers. Seven opposed, or, sorry, seven in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. And nothing this evening in unfinished business. That takes us right along to new business, a presentation by Matt Tapp, the Economic Development Director. And Mr. Grass, do you want to introduce Mr. Tapp?
Be more than happy to, sir. So as I'm sure the Commission is well aware, it's been a little bit of a slow start to the year as far as new development activities with not a lot of new active applications coming forward at this time. So I wanted to take that opportunity to bring in Mr. Tapp and kind of explain an ED 101 course to show a little bit of the work that him and I and his department do behind the scenes that really lead up to those applications that come before the Commission. So I know Mr. Tapp has been very, very busy over the last couple of years, working on some great projects and trying to bring new business and new residents here to the city. So with that, I will introduce Mr. Tapp. He has prepared a very nice presentation, so before we get started and we switch seats here so he can control the screen, I want to make sure that you all can see the presentation on your screens. No?
No.
There we go.
You working? Yeah.
Let's see. Can you see my cursor on there right now? Perfect. Now let me download the... I think I might have Xed out of it on accident.
And to clarify, you said he prepared this himself?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you two must know each other.
Perfect. So now that we're up and running, I will let him take the floor.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, first and foremost, and staff too, I want to thank you for the invitation and opportunity to come here this evening to speak to you all tonight. I'm getting over a cold from last week, so I apologize if I have to clear my throat about 18,000 times. But while David did say that there are a lack of applications starting out this year, I will tell you, put your seatbelt on because we're about to go for a really fun and exciting ride. So we've been working diligently on a number of projects to which I wanted to share this evening and also kind of talk about how we position Raymore and how we market it. So to be, before I start my formal presentation, you have before you, I got a couple of copies of materials we put together. I didn't have enough to give to everyone, so I wanted you all to share and pass around as I speak. And by all means, this is more of an informal chat presentation around the kitchen table, so interrupt me whenever you want to when you have questions. And I'd be happy to answer as much as I can without giving too much away or undermining the actual project. So without further ado, I wanted to kick off the actual presentation, kind of cover ED, economic development, I should clarify, overall or overview, and then work down towards the real estate, the different things we've been working on. So there is a lot happening. So there's a lot of slides that I don't want to keep you here for a couple hours. As fun as this is and as passionate as I am, I don't want to keep you. So hopefully you all can see my, see the screen, is that correct? How do I do the full screen? Or do I get full screen?
Go over to view.
Full screen. Perfect. All right. So first I wanted to cover the core mission that's not on here. Economic development is all about expanding the tax base. That's the bottom line that Mr. Fearborn, City Council, and the community as a whole tasked us, tasked me with. So to increase the local tax base, in my mind, it's all about bettering the community. Bettering the community means, in my mind, a resilient community, one that has a diverse array of property tax and sales tax, the two chief tax sources a local community has. And the three main components that we accomplish this with is the three Ps, as I call it. People, places, and prosperity. So people in that, we got to talk about workforce, developing that workforce and having a strong labor pool to attract those large primary employers, as we call them. Places or real estate is obviously very critical. We've got to have the right real estate, we've got to position it properly, we also have to plan it out properly. And prosperity just overall is, the goal is to have as many citizens of our community and folks that come into work be as prosperous as possible. So how do we do that? There are four main functions that economic developers use to expand the local tax base. The one that by far gets most of the headlines and gets most of the attention is business attraction, the blue one. And I purposefully made these 25% or each quarters. Now I will say, I spend a lot of my time on business attraction because we are a fast-growing, highly attractive suburban community, so that just makes a lot of sense. But we also can't forget business retention and expansion. A whole lot of economic development activity spurs from having conversations with businesses that have already called your community home. That's a core function that too many cities forget about or neglect, and that's why you see the state line crossing of companies is they don't pay attention to their existing companies enough. So I try and do the rounds and try and meet with as many businesses as I possibly can to make sure that things are going well. How is your business? Is there anything the city could possibly do to help you out? We help out with SBA loans so Mario could chime in and other business support functions, which is, to segue, the yellow one. So general speaking, business support, entrepreneurial sip, coworking space, incubator space, that's kind of a key one that a lot of people hone in on. There's also workforce development, and that is one that most people don't realize just how important it is. So many of these large companies, and a good example is Amazon, that was all over the news, they look for talent. Talent wins everything. You can have a not-so-good piece of real estate and have great talent pool and you'll win 99% of the time. So those are the four main functions that kind of initiate or enact or create this prosperity and resilient community. So I just want to show you kind of the overarching themes of economic development. Are there any questions at this point? I know I'm kind of high level, but it's also very important that you recognize that there's multiple factors and functions that feed into this. If not, here's the challenge. I don't know if you all can see that, and it's kind of washed away in the screen, the main screen. This is how I feel on a daily basis, so, and David could probably attest, a lot of people will drive by and you probably hear, you may even said it yourself, man, what's going on? There's just not a whole lot being built. Well, I'm not seeing a whole lot of things being built. Well, so much of the work is under the surface that you never, ever see. I would venture to guess, and I'm guessing these percentages, it's about 85, 90% of my effort especially, and then David certainly comes in towards the mid part of the iceberg. But so many, so much of the folks see is only that 10, 15% of, they're moving dirt, they're going vertical. And that is a great component, of course, obviously, that is our ultimate goal, but there's so much work that goes into getting to that point. And I always preach that patience is the key. And luckily, we have a mayor, city council, and a number of community leaders that recognize we are working on large things, not a Wendy's, not a Chick-fil-A, not a piecemeal approach or a hotel there. It's an overall, large project. We're talking nine figures, very, very large projects. So the key here is patience. So let's talk about projects, and I just referenced one. It's probably the biggest right now, and if, I'm assuming you're familiar with the geography of Raymore, but if not, this is the Good Ranch Track 1, as it's called, and that's the north side of North Cass Parkway and the I-49 interchange. It's about 140 acres, a fairly large track of ground. Show of hands, who's been to Lenexa City Center? Pretty impressed. Recently, in the last year or two?
My office.
Oh, there you go. Very, very impressive project. It took 15 years to get to this point. And that is about 60 to 80 acres, depending on, you know, how you calculate it out. So this is a large track of ground. We are currently working on a trend-setting, massive mixed-use project. And how I always explain it to folks is the days of throwing up a Bed Bath Beyond, TJ Maxx, maybe a movie theater, a couple pads, calling it good, those days are long gone. Those have already happened. Now, for retail commercial, you have to have a mixture of uses that feed into one another, and you're seeing that all over the city. So Lenexa City Center's a good example. Daytime population and nighttime population are critical because restaurants and these folks that we're talking to don't rely upon just dinner crowds, they rely upon lunch crowds as well. So it's important to ramp up the daytime population and rooftops. So this Phase 1 that we're working on, principally, we're looking at a very large, probably the biggest indoor entertainment venue in all of Kansas City. So that in and of itself is going to be a tremendous super-regional draw. Then add on top of that, the youth soccer, and perhaps Mario and others on the board can attest, I'm knee-deep, if not waist-deep, in youth sports. I can't tell you how many times I've been trapped on a soccer field or a random basketball shed in the middle of nowhere where between games during tournaments or league play, I'd want to hit Chick-fil-A or go see a movie, and there's nothing around it. So there's a lot of, and I do not like this word so much, but synergy between those two. So just the soccer with eight fields, it's estimated to draw at least 800,000, if not over a million. To give you an example or a comparison, that's roughly half of a Royals baseball season in fanbase, so keep that in mind. We also, of course, have hotels. So the operator tied to the soccer is a big one, and they have guaranteed number of rooms for hotels. And so we'll probably have at least two, if not possibly three, depending on the scale of the youth soccer. And there's retail commercial. Right now, we have, we do have inline retail, we have a bunch of pads, because I still feel that there is a gap in some of the inline retail that can come to our market area. So right now, to update you all, we're working on a master developer. We have one of the biggest, if not the biggest, developer in all of Kansas City and in the super-region that is highly intrigued and wants to do the project. We're just working with them and the current property owner is Good Otis LLC. So the Otis is out of Chicago and the Good family here locally. There's also the factors of the existing TDDs or Transportation Development Districts that will repay the bonds or repay the cost of doing the interchange, as well as Dean, North Cass, and Hubach Hill. So these are all factors to consider, and a good example of, you drive by a site and wonder, well, why is nothing happening there? It's such a great site. There's a lot of things that you can't put on a sign or can't see out there that affect decision-making on all fronts. So to give you a graphic, and I would love to show you the concept plan, but I cannot, it's highly confidential, but I wanted to illustrate to you where that 140 acres is. So I don't know if you can see my, can you see my cursor? Okay. So I-49 is the black line that goes north-south, and then this is the North Cass interchange. So we're talking that northeast corner of I-49 and North Cass Parkway. It's about 140 acres, and we've programmed about up to the pond, so about 80, 90 acres with some additional considerations in the future to the north. About every use you can think of, we're talking about and talking with, we have a lot of really big-time players around the table, there's just a lot of details and a lot of things we need to get through. So that is the Good Ranch Track 1, mixed use. Are there any questions? Yes?
Thank you. Couple little ones. And maybe this is a bigger question for another time. You were talking about like the inline, and obviously this would potentially have some, but that's just a small fraction of the, what did you say, synergy that you don't really like?
Yes.
I do notice around, you know, within a 10-mile radius or so, a lot of people are still doing that, that, you know, nearby, we've had, just even up and down 49 in a couple places, inline pad, inline pad kind of thing. Why are so many people doing that if that's not the way that economic development is moving? And I realize it's probably a much bigger question for another time, but just kind of if there was like a little, you know, 30-second elevator speech on that.
Sure. I can do it, for sure.
Or even 15.
I get this question a lot. So let's be clear, retail follows rooftops and jobs, not the other way around. So for Raymore, the benefit is we do have front edge on I-49. The downside is it's a bunch of greenfield. And development, developers, and retailers especially, don't go out on greenfields in the middle of nowhere. So you saw Truman Marketplace get redeveloped, great site. You saw Belton Gateway, which is much closer to the urban center and close to I-49, with development all around it. So to give you a full, kind of real quick 30-second elevator speech and history lesson, so the old department stores, who remembers going to department stores where you had sports, equipment, and treadmills, and clothes, and food, all on one roof? Those have exploded. And so Dick Sports took over the sports. And all these different components or departments of the department stores have blown up, and they're all sprinkling out. Well, the dust is starting to settle. That's probably the best analogy I can give, is all the dust is settling, and once it settles, there's not going to be a whole lot more activity beyond that. So that's why I say there's still some opportunity on certain things, specialty grocer, I could go on and on, but, so I still think there might be potential, but again, those guys especially do not go in open fields. So the critical factor is to show them, this is an all-encased, all-encompassing development, so you're going to have rooftops and daytime population just on this track, but we also have got other development happening in the area.
Well, and I like, personally, I like that because I, you know, you mentioned Gateway and then Truman. It literally seems like, you know, you can drive around town, and I'm sure it probably is the same developer, but it's literally the same shopping center and the same stores.
Same users.
Again and again, and they're, they're like weekend, you know, folks, it's not a daytime and you don't have office. Anyway, so I'm sorry. And then maybe another, also another question for another time. You mentioned eight synthetic soccer fields. Our neighbors to the north are or had planned. You know, I drive by that giant field of weeds and they keep posting that they're opening up. This next season's already sold out, and that's five years that they keep saying that same thing again and again. Is that an issue from a competition standpoint? Is there a need if they do open? Because I know Lee Summit hasn't brought anything to the table either.
Right.
That they were supposed to or trying to. Or is there some way that some pieces such as that could be fast-tracked that we get to the market ASAP because there are potential developments that would compete, and if we can get out ahead of them, we can start booking tournaments and big things fast?
Great questions and observations, and you're right on point. So I'm not with Grandview, so I can't speak to the Grandview project, but I can speak to our project. And I do know that there's a study out there that right here, right now, the Kansas City market needs 40 to 50 soccer fields of synthetic nature. And again, these are high-end fields, about a million dollars apiece. And so there's a study right here, right now, that they need 40 to 50 fields. So Raymore could certainly happen, as well as Grandview, as well as Paragon Star and Lee Summit. There's that much demand. Because keep in mind, this operator pulls from a 14-state area. It's an enormous operator. It's an anchor user by themselves. They have, I think they said, 40,000 soccer players under their roof. That's a lot of soccer players. So there's a lot of demand for fields.
Yeah, and I'll chime in on that piece. Having coached soccer and refereeing soccer, currently, the only, you know, you have the Overland Park, which is, you know, the Shields Park, which is, you know, well-done. You have Swope. That's it. And when you think about playing those fields, okay, you know, so you're getting asked to ref, and then you have Yandotte, which is like an hour away from everything else. So in all honesty, if Lee Summit, Grandview, and us did this, that would actually be a benefit because you'd have that many fields so close together, so when you're holding large, huge tournaments that draw people from across the nation.
Right.
And they don't have to travel more than 10 minutes to a field, that'd be a huge competitive advantage.
Right. And you can attract. You can attract, sorry, Mario, to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
You can attract the larger tournaments. So right now, Kansas City's limited in the types of tournaments they can attract because you'd have tons of fields. So a lot of times, these people, like you're saying, Mario, will go between each soccer complex within the same tournament, so.
Yeah, and you are, and that's what I'm saying. So currently, like if we play in a tournament, we could be playing at Shields one day, Swope the next, and then Yandotte the next.
Right.
And for, you know, even for us who live here locally, that's no fun. Now imagine people coming in from other states and going, holy cow, you know, we just drove five hours for soccer tournament, now we're driving an hour between fields for every game. And back to the point of, where do you then stay from a hotel standpoint? You know, and your hotel could be 20, 30 minutes away from whatever field you're playing at, it's just, it's a logistical nightmare.
Right.
Both for those wanting to host tournaments and those not wanting to.
Mm-hmm.
And the other piece too is Shields is only 25, 30 minutes. Swope is only, so it kind of gives you a nice little central between the two as well.
Definitely. And the whole idea here is, from the developer standpoint, you come here Friday night or Thursday night, and you don't get back in your car till Sunday or Monday. So we want to provide the mixture of users, restaurant rows, entertainment users, for you to stay on the site as much as possible. And actually walk, imagine that, walk from venue to venue, so, yeah. Any other questions related to this? Okay. So staying with that whole mixed-use approach, and again, I reiterate that everything moving forward is that mixture of use where you're no longer doing 40 acres plus of just retail, but you've got to have professional office, you've got to have luxury apartments, and another factor is to feed into that, is that we call it the Village Center at Fox Ridge. So this is the 40 acres between 58 Highway and the Lofts at Fox Ridge, which is recently approved, our first luxury apartment complex. We're showing a concept development layout that, these are all ones that David and I have worked on together. And this one includes a downtown center with some retail commercial, probably ground floor, with professional office either as a horizontal, I'll call it horizontal mixed-use or a vertical mixed-use. We also have inline retail, to appease my city manager, Jim Fearborn, and luxury multifamily. So right now, we have, I call it Project Promenade, which you'll probably love, Commissioner Wiggins. But that's a corner user right now that has a contract on the three acres, and we're working, I say we, other staff's working on the engineering, and you should see, this has already gone through here, correct?
Coming here.
Coming here, okay. Palmyra Platt and other considerations. So this one's a little fuzzy, so I apologize. Don't try and focus too much on the text, but it sure looks great in hard format in front of your eyes. But if you can see my cursor, this is 58 Highway, this is Mott Drive, Culvers is off the map to the west or to the left, Willowwind Square is up here, which we'll talk about here in a second. So this is the 40 acres. This is the three-plus acres that the corner user's talking about, and I can't say anything else right now. But this is intended to show you that downtown grid feel at the proper scale for our community. We're not talking about Park Place where there's eight blocks of retail, that's just not going to work in Raymore. Nor are we talking about Lenexa City Center where you have multiple, multiple blocks. This is properly scaled for our community now and going into the future, but it's meant to show you those forward-facing, forward-oriented buildings where parking is in the rear, and in a suburban environment, you've got to be extremely convenient, so the parking has to be close, but you still accomplish that pedestrian-oriented feel. So we've got parallel parking shown right now, front patios. I encourage David to draw it up to where you could have restaurants on the ends with big, large wraparound patios that overlooks the protected stream corridor with the trees. You'd have the lights focusing up on the trees, it'd be a beautiful setting, as well as some professional office. And like I said, it could be a more of a horizontal, mixed-use and/or a vertical, where there's ground floor commercial with professional office on top. I will say, a lot of the national chain of retailers don't like being underneath any other types of uses because, especially apartments, because let's say someone forgets to turn off the bathtub and it completely floods out their retail space without their fault at all. So there's a lot of liability, insurance issues tied to that. Still happens, but you'll notice that typically the national, not all the national chains will go in ground floor commercial below, especially apartments. Professional office, not as much, because there's not as much of that risk. So on this site plan, if you go look further west, this is that inline retail, I can't say who these folks are, but there's some examples. Up in my neck of the woods, we kind of borrowed an existing development off 152 Highway, which is kind of like 58 Highway, except maybe a little bit more traffic. So it's called the Village of Shaw Creek. And so just as an example, there's Sprouts, Boot Barn, Old Chicago. Again, if you go up there, you know what I'm talking about. We kind of modeled off of that and then a couple pads. So just to show that we could do inline in here, as well as doing downtown, as well as luxury apartments. Now I get a lot of questions, well, we just approved Lofts at Fox Ridge, why would you propose more apartments? And I would say, if I'm approaching this as a developer or if I'm attracting someone, I would recommend that they make this age-restricted, like a 55-plus, highly-active luxury apartment, so you're not directly competing with Lofts at Fox Ridge. But it's meant to show you that there's a mixture of uses, and I tell you, the retail developers like to see it the blue and the burnt orange or dark or light brown because that feeds into their users or their attraction efforts. So the whole idea here is you work in the blue, in lunchtime, you come over here to a burger place, grab a burger, and go sit down at a gazebo and eat it, those type of things. So you have the daytime population for lunch crowd, and you've got the nighttime population for dinnertime. And this is just a high-level example. This is no guarantees that this is going to happen in this way, shape, or form at all. And as a matter of fact, the Palmyra Platt that you'll see will not likely reflect a whole lot of this, but it's just meant to be a high level of how I see market conditions. And I have these thought bubbles and say, David, make this happen, and he does a magnificent job of doing that. And you'd be amazed at how much this really produces interest. So are there any questions related to the Village Center at Fox Ridge?
Do we have enough people in Raymore to, I don't know, keep this thing afloat? I mean, I don't want to see things come in and then, you know, a couple of years, they're vacant.
That's a great question and a good point. With this, with this project, this is one of those things where it's either the Good Ranch Track 1 or it's this, and/or time. You just, you have to get more rooftops, you've got to get more population. In my mind, the Good Ranch Track 1 happens, we have to get a lot more denser, a lot more rooftops, and then this will happen probably in, you know, five, 10, 15 years, depends on how quickly we grow. So this would probably require a population in the ballpark of, I'd say, 40,000-ish. I don't want to put a firm number on it, but somewhere around there. If we pretty much got a double in population, we'd probably get another project like this to happen. Because these red guys, these retailers, they look at demographics, and the numbers don't lie. And we have good numbers now, that's because we don't have anything yet, but as we get more retail in, those numbers diminish.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay. Again, sticking to the mixed use, we're currently working on a project just to the west of us, on the west side of Municipal Circle. We currently own a couple of lots, and we've been talking with the developer about a concept where there's commercial and there's luxury apartments. And I've been advocating here- And I've been advocating here at City Hall, anything beyond, pretty much where we're sitting, if not a bit further closer to Fifty-Eight, it's going to be a long time before retail or commercial use comes to this point back. This is considered second, third tier off of Fifty-Eight. So again, your population base has to get to the point that will support that, whether it's dentist, ortho, you name it, it'd be something along those lines. So I advocate that what we should be doing is looking at how we can get folks to live around Municipal Circle, as well as Town Center, to help support the retail commercial that can fill in the still remaining commercial lots that we still have plenty of between Fifty-Eight and this point. So I don't know if you can see it very well, and then again, this is a very high level and it's going to change. But it's meant to show you that there's a couple of commercial buildings. And right now, we're talking about an educational, institutional type of things. And we're currently talking to some folks about it. I can't share much more than that. But there's also the luxury multifamily that will directly feed this commercial use. So just meant to give you a visual of what it could look like. This is a very, very tight site, so we've got to be creative with parking. So what you can't really see here is, on almost all these residential buildings, they're going to do that tuck-in parking where they have the garage door. You pull in the back, and the parking is built into the ground level. So you park inside there, so you get more parking stalls without affecting the building footprint. And again, this is just a high-level idea or concept, but we wanted to show it to you, to show you kind of what we do and what we, what our brains are thinking. Are there any questions? So to show you, that line I'm talking about is roughly through here. Anything south of there in retail is going to be a long time, or a commercial use. So that's why I'll continue to advocate residential in this area. Are there any questions? I'm sorry, I'm going to keep it going, okay. On a mixed-use, again, just purely because there is a mixture of uses, not necessarily a true mixed-use project, but the Kirby Site. And the Kirby Site, if you all aren't familiar, that's the northeast corner of Fifty-Eight Highway and Sunset Lane. So basically across Sunset Lane from Price Chopper. It's about fourteen point one seven acres. And I'm currently working with a person that just acquired the roughly four and a half acres right there in the corner. To the north of that, you should recall, or maybe recall Compass Health, who currently is operating as Pathways here in Raymore. They're wanting to locate their flagship building there. So we're talking about medical, dental, as well as their mental health, on about a seventy thousand square foot facility. So we're going to probably double their employee count, if not more, along with the full-scale event space and training area. So that building's going to back up to the existing pond on the north end of the Kirby Site for a general term. And then in front of that is what I'm talking about. So trying to work with the property owner to convince them to keep the hard corner, as we call it. A hard corner is just a corner that has two intersecting streets, typically with a traffic signal, which is highly attractive to retail. And then they would put their multi-tenant commercial building behind that. So in a graphical sense, you can kind of see the Compass Health that we've superimposed on here. This is just a very high-level concept, I think it is and going to change. But then here's that multi-tenant, and then a corner retail with a drive-through. So it kind of gives you an idea. You still have a pad site, and then potential future commercial, if and when, that were to expand out that way. Are there any questions with the Kirby Site? Good. So let's go to Heritage Plaza, which is Pine Street east of Fifty-Eight. This is about an eight, almost eight and a half acre piece of ground. And David and I were just talking about that before we started here. And the western portion is about two point two six four acres, two commercial buildings we're showing. And then the eastern side is keeping that multifamily going. So we've got those existing duplexes that are super-nice and filling up rather quickly. Why not have a buffering with another multifamily? Because retail is just not going to go that far east off of Fifty-Eight in a tight geography that's being shown. We actually have a developer working to acquire the multifamily piece right now as we speak. So this is that visual. So the expression, a picture tells a thousand words, is so true when it comes to real estate. But here is Pine Street, here's Fifty-Eight, where it does the S-curve going north-south. This is the existing Sonic. So you see how narrow the property is when you first come off Pine. And really, the only thing that could happen is one of those really small coffee shops, in theory. But it does lend itself well for a multi-tenant on the next few lots. If you see those black lines, those are existing lot lines. And this has been platted for commercial all through here. But there's a natural divide with the storm sewer, which is that magenta-purple color, as well as sanitary sewer, to where I think, in my mind, multifamily residential makes a lot of sense in this area, if not, you know, these three lots. Because the duplexes are just east of here that they're building right now. So again, just a visual to show you, we've got residential that feeds directly into that retail commercial. Any questions? So keep going east on Fifty-Eight, we'll finish out the mixed-use. And this is another one of those where it's considered mixed-use because there's multiple types of uses, but in reality, it's a retail and industrial site. So this is the southeast corner of Fifty-Eight and J, or South Lincoln, or Curzwell, depending on which way you're going, on this, the north-south street. About fifty-six acres, there is a newer property owner group that was interested in exploring what they could potentially do there. And so we took our growth management plan, and David and I got to working, and we drafted up some things. And during this process, this is a good, good case scenario to show, as you go through this, you kind of realize some of those obstacles or hurdles to development. You drive out there and say, man, that's a great piece of ground, I don't know why nothing's happening. Well, the existing sewer systems west of J slash Lincoln Road cannot serve any new development on this property, which is a big issue. Because the only way to get sewer service then is to run a brand-new sewer line up the tributary up to Alexander Creek, about fifty-five hundred feet. With conservative estimates, that'd be about a seven hundred thousand to a million-dollar project just to get sanitary sewer to the site. So again, one of those examples of drive-by, looks great, stuff you can't show on a sign or can't see out on the ground. But with that in mind, we went ahead and did our concept plans. We have a couple of scenarios or options, option A and option B. And there's three, kind of three main levels of industrial buildings. There's the smaller guys, so anything from zero square feet to fifty thousand square feet. Then you get the mid-range, which is the fifties to about a hundreds. Then you have the big bad boys, such as Southview Commerce Center, our North Casse Business Park, and then Kansas City Southern Intermodal with those big, huge industrial buildings. That's not what we're talking about here. The market just would not allow for it until the gap between Lee Summit and Raymore basically closes with a whole bunch of rooftops. But what does make sense is that mid-range to small-range industrial. So I don't know if you can see really well on your screens, but in the corner, we're talking about retail. And again, it's important that we don't look at this in a real detailed fashion, but just know, another gas station, C-store, corner user, or multi-tenant, and a couple additional buildings could happen there. It's about, I think, six point three or five acres. There is floodplain on the property, so we're preserving that, as well as a stream buffer, and also making those stormwater features. So I don't know if you can read it too well, but these smaller ones, each square represents a fifty-square-foot area, which is by purpose, that's how we and how developers do it. And so each square is fifty square feet. So these are a couple of fifteens, really small guys, and then thirty thousand, sixty, seventy, and then these are the kind of bigger ninety thousand square foot, as a hypothetical sense. So David and I said, well, what about if we went small for more of the area? So we did a lot of smaller guys, just to show how that could happen. And then future residential by the growth management plan is all through here. So we want to do some proper screening and make sure that these play nicely together. So I just want to show that to you, to show that we do industrial, we do retail, we do a whole slew of different product types, as we call them, in development. Is there any questions on the corner of Fifty-Eight and J? So let's talk about retail exclusively, and the infamous Willowwind Square. Most folks know where Willowwind Square is, but it's an existing aging shopping center at Fifty-Eight Highway and Fox Ridge, the northwest corner. And it's about nine point six seven acres, had a lot of interest. I can count on two hands how many developers have looked at this site or talked to the owners. We've got another one working on it right now. It's extremely attractive, because it's the doorstep or front door to Creek Moor and all the additional housing around it. But also, we've got the four hundred units of luxury Class A apartments. So this is a perfect example of how you take calculated risk, or you are aggressive in attracting luxury multifamily, and it spurs additional activity, not just here, but on the forty acres as well. So there's a lot of interest, and I don't know if you can really see it that well, my screen's a little fuzzy. But there's actually five existing buildings, most folks know. You've got Dairy Queen, Missouri Mud, Mexico Viejo, a lot of really good users. There's actually three distinct property owners. The first one is owned by the Christian Church across the street. The second is owned by Magic Walk. It was going to be a Magic Walk, but now it never will be a Magic Walk. So it's for sale. So you'll see the two real estate signs on there. Carl LaSala represents one, and William Gaskow with Block &amp; Company represents two. The remaining portion is owned by a group of individuals. And that's the key element to any type of redevelopment. And in my perspective, I don't want to see, for lack of a better term, a lipstick-on-a-pig redevelopment of this site. It needs to be done right and done well. And there's all different ways of doing that. So we're going to show you just one concept or an idea. It's important to note that it's not for sure going to happen this way. But there's a lot of factors and considerations when you do redevelopment with existing tenants and buildings. So, but David and I, we've done a couple of concepts. So this is a concept that's gained a lot of traction. The dark yellow is existing, and then the lighter yellow, if you can see, is any type of new structure. So you might recall, existing right now is a couple of vacant lots with a driveway, I'll call it, going into Willowwind, as well as the existing buildings. In its place, I recommend, in today's standards and layout, those front three buildings don't really fit the modern requirements. So in its place, I recommend extending, kind of in an L shape, with an anchor restaurant at the end of the new extension of the main buildings, we'll say, to the north end. And then you create four pads. And if I hear it every day, I hear, what about Olive Garden and Red Lobster? Well, in a concept form, purely, this is Olive Garden, Red Lobster, just to show you how it looks. And then it makes a lot of sense in my mind to, we want to keep Dairy Queen, so let's relocate them to a pad that is their modern iteration with a drive-through. And we've got so much interest, I could give you a litany list of folks that will take up pad site D. We also have that gas line easement, fifty feet, is about mid-size. So you can put parking, you can put landscaping, you just can't put permanent people over it. So that's why we have the building and parking, the parking being over the easement. So just meant to show you, there's got to be some additional stormwater fact, there's so many different factors here. But it's good to show a visual. It's good to show what could happen or what should happen on that site. Are there any questions with Willowwind Square? It is a very high priority, if you ever talk to the mayor, Turnbull, a lot of city council members, this is a very high priority. So it is my goal to have a TIF commission hearing on this property in two thousand nineteen.
Okay. It kind of goes where I was going. With three different landowners for this particular area, what are their inclination to cooperate with such a project?
They're definitely interested. Money always talks, I'll always say that. So, but yeah, definitely on the two pad sites, they have brokers, it's very much for sale, pricing's very clear. Yeah, it's going to take, it takes a little bit of time. The initial due diligence of assembling all the property and the existing buildings takes a little while. Yeah. Otherwise, it already have happened by now.
So at the very beginning, you showed the little, you know, four parts of your job, and one of which is assisting and doing whatever you can to grow existing business within Raymore. Obviously, you referenced Dairy Queen, but there are a handful of other, you know, shops. In a hypothetical, traditional sense, how does one, well, and even, I guess even in a hypothetical sense, whoever potentially could come together and buy this whole thing, they could scrape the entire property if they wanted to down to the ground.
They could pursue that, yes.
Well, okay, sorry, thank you. So how does, either you and your job, or how do we facilitate? You know, obviously, if we kept that north end of things, we have Dairy Queen, we have the convenience, or the smokes and liquor store. We have Chinese restaurant, we've got the Republican, Cass County Republicans there. Yeah, so there's a number of businesses. So that's an aspect of your job is to keep our existing businesses happy. You know, is it a, try to help them find something that's similar price in a nearby area to help them move, help move, help with moving expenses or whatever? Or is it, hey, we'll try to, you know, maybe we can do this northeast section of it first and move somebody over there, and then?
Yes, 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 and yes, so a combination thereof. The perfect scenario is, we keep all the existing tenants, relocate them within the center. Depending on the amount of scraping or removing of buildings, that's just not going to happen. And the downside is, there's not a whole lot of existing space in Raymore. Believe me, I'll do everything I can to work with the developer on keeping as many of the tenants as we possibly can. I always want to stress, people are paying well below market value lease rates in this area, in this center. In any new development, any redevelopment, the rent's going to go higher. It just is, it has to. Any new construction, if you're below eighteen dollars a square foot, you're doing, you're doing really well on the rate. So it's all about working with existing tenants, seeing what we can do. And I'm transparent, I'll say that's the biggest challenge for me, the biggest hurdle for me personally. And I know everyone in the community, because I visit Missouri Mud a lot with meetings. I frequent Mexico Viejo a lot. There's a lot of folks I visit in there, and we're going to do everything we can. But at the end of the day, I'm going to try and be a statesman-like as I can. You kind of see, below-market rates, what it looks like. It's just not acceptable. The condition of the buildings, the property, for me, does not equate to the image or the style of Raymore. We need to get it up to our standard. And unfortunately, there's going to be challenges tied to that. But you want to do everything you can. You can't keep them in the center to relocate them. And if not by statute, by state law, you have to provide a certain amount, for, at least a minimum amount for relocation assistance. So again, this is all part of the conversation with the developer of, hey, let's try and make a real good plan about how we're going to keep the existing tenants or work with them. But unfortunately, I wish I had, I mean, there is Pine Street, there's other things, but there's just not a whole lot of existing space in Raymore. And we've lost out on some things. I'll tell you too, just a sidebar, side note, and I know I'm running long in time, because I'm really passionate about this, I could talk for hours, but Cadence did the redevelopment at Dean and Fifty-Eight. So Kay Jewelers, Mod Pizza, Pan Express, all that, great product. They've turned away eleven to fourteen users that wanted to go in there. So there is a lot of demand that people want to come into this area, there just isn't any product. The challenge is, I'm going through these, but there's a lot of real estate challenges. It's not as easy as just driving by and saying, well, there's a big open greenfield, why can't, you know, something happen there? There's a lot of things that people don't see. So hopefully I answered your question as best I can. I don't want it to happen, believe me. So we'll do everything we can. Any other questions, Willowwind? I'm running a little long, I'm sorry. Okay, retail commercial, Timber Trails commercial. Most folks realize the residential piece of Timber Trails and Summit Homes, as well as Hutt Midwest owns the property and develops it. But there is about a three point seven to, we could say five, six acres, depending on what happens, of planned, non-residential, likely commercial up on the outer road. So, and actually, we're working right now with Hutt Midwest and a local commercial broker on a potential sit-down restaurant, really early stages. I'm not even going to, you know, present that and say that we've got a lot of hope there. But the good news is, is that we've got the players around the table talking, and we'll certainly get some more activity. But from a visual standpoint, to give you an idea, City Limits is just, just north of there. So you're in between TransWest and Benton House, right now, kind of showing three point seven three acres. But we have some ideas and plans about how you could have the commercial go, my mouse isn't really working, but to go basically to this, this line, if you can see that. So that could be, you know, seven, eight, nine, ten acres, depending. As you know, outer road, great frontage visibility, and I forty-nine, you can pretty much think about who would go there. Hotels, as I'm showing here, hotels, sit-down restaurants, those type of things. So it's one of those deals where, you know, Good Ranch Track One could certainly happen, and this could piggyback off of that and vice versa. So it shows you that ripple effect. I always say, success begets success. So the good news is, we have a lot of sites that are available. And then this is also planned multifamily. Hutt Midwest has a concept plan that continues the townhomes, as well as some apartments. But that's all flex, it could happen in any way, shape, or form. Any question on Timber Trail? Now, I'm going to be very, very clear, on these next two... Now, let's, I'm going to be very, very clear. On these next two, extremely hypothetical. I put it in my notes here. Steak and Shake is not closing. This is merely hypothetical. But if, just in the event that something were to happen, this is meant to show you, there's a lot of creative ways that we can redevelop, bring things together that make it way more attractive. So this site's about 1.64, 1.65 acres. David and I did a concept that would keep the Steak and Shake, expand it, and take in the Historical Society property, which is the quilt shop, and I think an attorney or CPA, and do a multi-tenant. So if you can see on here, this is the existing Steak and Shake building outline, footprint, and then multi-tenant. You can kind of see the black lines of existing parcels. So this is roughly where the house sits right now. So just meant to show you as an example of a creative reuse and redevelopment to include a drive-through. Incapped drive-throughs are always in high demand, so we've got a lot of interest. But this is just purely hypothetical, not going to happen right now anyway. Any questions? And then there's a pad, there's actually a secret pad site, I like to call it. There's a secret pad site out front of Sam's Club, which is over here in Office Max, Office Depot, which is down here, and the sea of parking, as I call it. There's an opportunity to do a multi-tenant, as we're showing here, or it could be, you know, Burger King or some type of pad site with a drive-through. So just meant to show you, there, there's creative ways of finding available real estate. Any questions? Let's talk about professional medical office really quick. Does anybody know where Heritage Professional Park site is? The two existing buildings were just recently demolished. So that's 58 and Madison Street, about 1.25 acres. In speaking with Mr. Catterett and Mr. Grass here, I've learned that there's a lot of history tied to that site in that traditional retail commercial storefront probably is not the best idea there. So we took it and ran and did a couple of layout plans, and I'll be perfectly honest, I think we have a little too much building size for the site. But it's, it's meant to show you what could happen there. I know the mayor and other folks have some ideas on that property, but if professional office were to happen, a medical office, this is how it could potentially happen. This is option A or idea of option A. It's about 11,000 square feet. We'd probably shave it down a little bit, probably do a little bit more parking. But as you all might know, there's no access on Madison or 58, so you got to wrap around on the old Foxwood Drive and, and gain access that way. Proper screening, obviously, because some nice folks live back here, so we want to make sure that we've got good screening to screen their view as much as possible from the professional office. Single-story, probably not going to do multi-story because of parking factors. Option B kind of shifts it around a little bit. I don't really have one preference over the other, but just meant to show you how you can kind of move these pieces around. This presents more parking, which is probably a good thing for, you know, orthopedics or whomever might go in here. And then we also, for example, show the site distance triangle. Any questions?
Yeah, is there any option for a right turn onto 58 out the west side there?
I doubt Public Works would authorize that. I doubt it.
Even if it's just a right turn?
Yeah. Yeah. I, it could be maybe, maybe right in, right out, but that would, Mr. Crass is not a biggest fan of right in, right outs. So, or pork chops, as they're called. So I guess you could, but you're on a curve, line of sight's not the best. I would strongly advise against that. Unless they had to have it, and it was Cerner.
Yeah, I mean, I, well, because I was just thinking if you did, you know, you could have like, call it like a, almost like an on-ramp, for lack of a better word. But like, you know, you extend the, the road so that you have a little space to kind of get out before you start going, it's kind of. But anyway.
Right.
Because I, I just think from a, you know, from a business standpoint, you know, it's a great corner, but then for people to get in and out.
Let's see. Are you talking about? Are you talking about an extension of like Foxwood right here, or are you talking about on the actual site itself having a access point?
I'm talking about whatever way the city would be okay with it.
There's a reason why this, this street got vacated. There's no way that line of sight and angles.
Right. And, but you know, like, you know, just like, yeah, I mean, if you curved it onto the site and came down, you know, and then, you know, like I said, just made it a right only.
That's a good point.
You know, I, I, because again, it's, it's an amazing site, but to then have, I, I don't know if you've ever been on North Madison with the post office right there, trying to even, you know, trying to leave people coming out of the neighborhood. It, it, it's a nightmare. And so if you put in a retail site that's going to draw more people, you're going to have.
Professional office, medical office.
Still.
Nothing post 5:00 or 6:00 PM.
What, what I would want to do here, and of course, we don't need to solve the whole thing tonight, but I'd go to the south end of the curve there on North Madison by Harmon Tire. And, you know, they're, they're not the same. There's, there's a different dynamic. You know, there's a light here at, at North Madison, there's not a light down by Harmon Tire. But when you, when you sneak on down and look, I guess, Commissioner O'Kea, what, what came to mind when you mentioned that was, you've got the sneak out on North Madison. It's, it's an exit from 58, it's not an entrance. But, you know, to me, it looks a little bit like the same problem. Whether that's the best solution, I don't know. But, I mean, you know, it, to me, it's kind of like, well, let's look at this, let's look at how it works. And, and you know, that in my mind, if it, if it generally works, and I'm not familiar with too many recs down there, it would be like, well, could we do something like that up here? But.
Yeah, and I mean, that's exactly what I'm talking about. But like the reverse where instead of getting off of Madison, you're getting, you're hopping on. And that's what I'm saying. I don't know if you could extend, you know, like a, and I, I call it an on-ramp because I don't know what, what the hell else you call it. Basically adding another little lane there for people who are merging on to 58, to give them a little distance in time.
I'm not trying to solve this, but Mr. Tap, if you'd sneak down to the bottom again, I want to point out one more thing. And then, yeah, by Harmon, but now keep going a little bit south.
Okay.
So the building clustered just south on the other side of, of the street there from Harmon.
Right here?
Yeah, that one. That's also commercial if I'm, if I'm right. And, you know, I can't say that I've really done much there, not, not much business. I think I have been in those buildings. But, you know, the, the way things are fitted in, it, it's kind of like you and Mr. Grass are working to show us options here. Just seemed like, again, you know, I'd, I'd probably look at the south end of the curve as a model, good or bad, draw from our experience there and leverage it. And, you know, not trying to, not trying to solve it, that's your job.
No, all, all good ideas. That's, that's the whole idea about, about doing these is to stimulate conversation and, and talk about, talk about these sites. Any other question, observations, thoughts? So let's talk industrial a little bit. And so the Good Ranch North Cass Business Park, that's the industrial area of the Good Ranch. And it's about actually 136 acres. This is an old slide, I'll have to update that. But it's, let's see if I, yeah, this kind of helps. So we talked about Good Ranch Track One up here. This is North Cass Parkway, I-49. And we're on a turn here. I've never advised north not being up, but that's how you have to do it with a linear site. But, so North Cass Parkway, Dean Avenue stops right here. So this is the future extension of Dean Avenue. As the developer's showing, there's a, a strip, I call it, of retail. That's North Cass Plaza, as it's called. And this is the 136 acre piece of ground that Van Trust Real Estate is, is looking at or reviewing and proposing. Van Trust is one of the biggest developers in Kansas City and beyond. They're actually a national developer based out of Kansas City. So a great company to have. As you can see, there's a couple of options, two of them, there we go. Okay. So if you know anything about industrial, again, these are 50 square foot squares, so pretty much an industry standard. There's a thing called cross-docking. So a lot of times a company will take up half this building or all the building, and they'll have inbound shipments and then outbound. And literally, the product goes back and forth or from one side to the other. So it's, it's all done from an operational standpoint. So you've got truck traffic, truck parking, and then vehicular parking on the side. So great project. Show you the stats real quick. I think I have it on here. It's about a hundred million dollar project. So this is actually the biggest project that Raymore has ever seen or will see. Good Ranch Track One will probably give a run for its money. But this would create anywhere from 1,200 or 1,700 jobs, maybe more, depending on the density or the type of employers that would happen. 1.4 to 1.9 million square feet. And the reason for that fluctuation are these couple scenarios. So this is a 500 and 2,000, roughly 500,000 square foot building. As Southview goes up in Belton, the first building, I believe, is going to be 600,000. So as that first building arises from the ashes of Southview, that'll be a good, good litmus test or a good example to, to show North Point's doing that one, which is another industrial developer. But that's the reason for the change here. So you've got a 500, and then these are 370, 380,000 square feet. Very, very common. Three Trails Industrial Park, if you know where that is, kind of by Cerner Innovations Campus, 87th-ish, between 435 and 71 Highway, is a good example of these kind of size. Either that, or if a million square foot facility, that's typically e-commerce, Amazon, you name it, CVS, distribution, we could, we could do that. It's meant to show that there's myriad ways of, of doing it. So we could do a million square feet to 500 to 380. They also have talked about other side of Dean, but we won't talk about that right now. So where the project is at, and I also want to talk about the, the impact. So working with the Kansas City Area Development Council, KCADC, which is the main regional business attraction organization for the entire metro area. They, they bring in all the, the big hitters. We did some economic impact analysis. And so that's basically divided up into three different areas, direct, indirect, and induced. Direct are those activities, the, the wages and the sales and output of the actual folks that are in that park. That's direct. Indirect, in a hypothetical, hypothetical sense, would be if we had Claycom plant or some auto or bigger manufacturer. A lot of times you have those subsequent suppliers of, of that bigger product. So the indirect are those supporting businesses that would go into that direct. And then induced is the lunchtime, nighttime, Wendy's, Hy-Vee, Price Chopper, you know, those type of activities. So if you see it broken down, the direct impact, direct economic impact is about 175-ish million. The indirect calculated out, it's about 7.3. And then $11.2 million of that induced spending for folks that live and, and work in this area. And that, I believe, if I remember my numbers right, that's the 40% capture rate that I placed on the Cass County, because they only go down to the county level or up to the county level. So I estimated we could capture about 40% of that activity. Obviously, 100% of the direct, because the direct's in Raymore. But of the indirect and induced, I did 40%. So that's a substantial amount of, of impact. I could show you the, the, the total sales tax of Raymore. I'm trying to remember what it was exactly. But it almost doubles our, our activity. So it's a big project. So we're working with the developer. I believe it's already gone to the planning and commission. It's at, it was at city council. We went ahead and removed the, the public hearing. So right now, we're, we're working out the details of the infrastructure and the incentive package. These, these deals are extremely complex, and we want to make sure that it's the right deal for everybody. So kind of hit the pause button, and we're going to see how it kind of matriculates as we move forward. Any questions on Van Trust or the Good Ranch industrial site? So we've gone through all the real estate, and now it's the people portion of it. So on the workforce development side of things, that is we work with community partners on, on the talent pool. And, and workforce development is number, now number one on the list of must-haves for companies that are looking to locate or relocate into new areas, is what kind of labor do we have access to? It's called the labor wars, if you ever read up on things, but it's a, it's a big thing. Not just for us, not just for Cass County, but for Kansas City as a whole. So Bill Brown with the Cass County Corporation for Economic Development spearheaded the ACT, that yes, that same ACT that we all know on the, the test-taking exam standpoint. But they also have a certified work-ready community program. And so what this did is it brought all of us, different decision-makers or community partners together. So school districts, municipalities, and major employers around the same table, talking about talent and talking about workforce. And it breaks down the different employee sources of current transitioning, emerging. We don't need to go into a whole lot of detail. The good news is we actually received our, our certified status. So that was just in the last two months. What's been great about that, that activity is it's, it spurred the conversation and got the right folks around the table. So that then in turn created the, we love acronyms in local government, but the CCWDC, but that's the Workforce Development Collaborative, and that's a good term to use. We are collaborating to be as competitive as we possibly can as Southview comes online, as hopefully our industrial comes online, if Peculiar can get theirs going. We need to true improve up our continual source of talent, and what better source than the high school? I will continue to advocate always that a successful career in life is not just a four-year degree and, and those type of careers tied to that, but also there's lots of well-paying career fields that don't necessarily require a four-year or even a two-year degree. I've heard that beginner welders that are certified at the, the nuclear, the NNSA plant can make anywhere from 60, 70, 80,000. So there's some substantial career earnings in fields out there for those folks. So I want to try and work with the school district and districts on capturing those kids that may have fallen through the cracks of that career readiness and that four-year degree orientation or tilt. So anyway, I say all that to say that workforce development is in its infant stages in Cass County, and we've got the right players. We've got all the school districts, Ray Peck included, Belton, Harrisonville, Pleasant Hill, as well as county folks, city folks, and, and major employers. So. Any questions on workforce development? It's a really big, high-level issue, but, but it's something that has to be addressed and attacked. So you saw the products of, of what the communications department and myself have been working on. And there's a lot of good stuff in there, and I'll actually kind of show them real quick if I have time, David. I know that I've gone well beyond my slated half hour, is that right? But there's a couple of one-pagers. The left-hand side is retail. Our retail trade area is much, 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 much bigger than just our city limits. We contracted with Retail Strategies, a retail recruitment firm. And through their, their analysis, and to be perfectly blunt, some, some scary Big Brother stuff with these things. When you turn the location services on, they are tracking you. But whenever you're in Sam's Club, for instance, and you turn on the Sam's Club app, it's now following you. So they can, could keep track of you and know that if your phone sat still for anywhere from six to eight hours, they kind of know where you live. Now, it's not exact, it's an area, but through all that analysis, the good news is, is that our retail trade area, or RTA, is about a 15-minute drive time. So it's roughly 150, 170,000 people. So that's a lot of folks. And, and, and that's, that's a key selling point and talking point. The right-hand side is industrial, and it's more of a regional or KC metro basis. But workforce, we have some really strong numbers, and that's why you're seeing North Point interested in Southview. That's why you're seeing Van Trust interested in our site, is we're going to draw a good 30, 40-minute drive time for employees. So that's, that's, that's a pretty big net that we're, we're casting out there. So we've got a lot of good numbers there, and the right kind of numbers. This one, we all know about the population growth, and we kind of referenced it, Jim and myself, before the meeting. But in 1970, if you can see it, the population of Raymore was 567. So we know the meteoric rise of population every 10 years in Raymore. It used to be we doubled in population every 10 years. We kind of slowed down because of the Great Recession. But we're about now 22,500 and growing rapidly. But I took it a little, few steps further. And so if you look at the fastest-growing cities from a population 2000 to 2010, so 2020 census is coming out, I'll be kind of curious to see where we fall on that. We were number seven in growth, which is pretty, pretty impressive, considering the communities were going up against there of Lee's Summit, Kansas City, Shawnee, Overland Park, Olathe. But I took it a step further as well and talked about single-family building permits from 2010 to 2017. Um, but I took it a step further as well, and talked about single-family building permits from two thousand and ten to two thousand and seventeen, to which I need to update as well, but, just sheer number-wise, just sheer number, we're number eleven, which doesn't sound all that perhaps impressive, but it is, because, I said, well, wait a minute, why are we comparing ourselves against communities that are a hundred and forty, a hundred and seventy, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, five, ten times the size of us? So, per capita, every twenty people that call Raymore home are issuing a single-family building permit, that's number one in the metropolitan area, but against, against a lot of, of big-time, fast-growing communities, so it's not just that we're growing, but the rate that we're growing is, is substantial. From a retail, commercial perspective, we have a lot of attractive um, features. One of which, this is more of the back page, so I'm kind of going backwards a little bit, but there's almost thirty-five thousand cars that hits Fifty-Eight Highway in Raymore, if you've seen the numbers or not, but I bet you, you've witnessed it and experienced it, it, it's substantial. It's a, kind of a pain driving, but it's a huge benefit, that's why those eleven, fourteen retailers had to be turned away at Dean and Fifty-Eight, is because of that number, and because of our demographics and income levels, so it's a goo, it's a really good number, really good number, but on the back page, one of the key elements as to why we're getting all this traction, why I'm generating all this attraction efforts, is number one and number two on this list, so, Cerner, and then Honeywell, NNSA, these are two enormous, major employers within a easy driving time, and so, everything I do, I'm positioning Raymore to be the most attractive community for all these major employers, not just these two, but of course, it's pretty heavy tilted, or heavy uh, heavy weight, heavy weight on the top side, both from a housing standpoint, but also an entertainment destination experience standpoint, so everything I'm doing, you know, Good Ranch Track One, everything is to be the most attractive place to live, work, and play. I do not like that expression, but there's no better expression, that's truly what we want to be, is live, work, and play. Um, and this, this definitely helps us, it opens the door. Another factor, real quick, is the retail marketplace leakage surplus, it's called uh, gap analysis, and so, what this does, is it takes the demand numbers from census figures, so whenever you fill out the census forms and you talk about how much you spend on cars and groceries and all that, it's, it's, it's for a reason, it's a very important reason, because they can calculate the demand of an area, so this is actually a ten-mile radius of Fifty-Eight and Dean, which is our epicenter retail. It's roughly a fifteen-minute drive time, probably a little bit shorter, actually, but there's almost a billion dollars leaving our retail trade area, leaving. We need to stop that leakage. You know all too well, on a Friday night, Saturday night, looking at a movie, looking at, going shopping, or else, you're, you're going outside of, especially Raymore, if not our retail trade area. So, we want to capture that as much as we can, since it's a self-fulfilling prophecy, you get more sales tax revenue, we can infuse it into the community, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Because of our analysis of retail strategies, that consulting firm, we're focusing on four categories. Entertainment is a big one, and then specialty grocers, I'll clarify, and then restaurants and clothing apparel kind of follow those two, so just know that this is our, kind of the main focus areas that we're looking to attract. We also have a commercial real estate listing service, and I won't go into much more detail, but uh, through the gracious efforts of our community partner, KCPNL, they offer this fantastic service, so I would encourage you, whenever you are bored out there and, and perusing the internet, go to my webpage, Economic Development, and um, there's a link on there, which I need to dramatically improve my webpage, but uh, there's an available sites and buildings link, and it will link you up to this site, there's buildings, uh, which, again, we'll reiterate, there's not a whole lot of, um, but then there's also sites, and so, for instance, here's Track One, just live and, and, live and in charge here. Um, we've got the, the, the stats here, and who to talk to, um, and then we've also got some additional files, so, this should look kind of familiar. So that's showing the tract and public utilities, um, but anyway, it's a great ser, it's a great service, and uh, KCPNL is gracious enough to, to pay all the bills and allow us to have access to this, so a lot of brokers use it, a lot of folks use it, so, I'm, really apologize, I'm passionate about this, I could talk forever, but we all have families, so, I will, I will close my formal presentation with that. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have one, simply by omission, I don't think I missed it, the old Orselen Building.
Yes, sir, so, you're a keen observer, um, I'm not sure who may have watched the City Council work session last night, but uh,
I did not.
Okay, well, that was part of it, but I, I went ahead and took those out, and infused some additional concept plans that Dave and I worked on. Um, it's about a forty-two thousand square foot building, twenty, twenty-eight thousand of it is the taller ceiling, so actually talking to a couple of potential reusers of the, the taller ceiling space, so, um, hoping we gain traction on that. Uh, it'd be nice, if timing is done right, we could do a bigger TIF area, where Will, Will, Willowwind Square would be one project area, and then Orselen's could be another project area, depending on what level of improvements they might need on that, the building in sight, so.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and of course, there's also the old filling service station on Pine Street in Fifty-Eight, to which I'm working with the, the property building owners on as well, so uh, had a really, really neat uh, coffee shop idea there, which would have been fantastic, you know, having the garage doors being rolled out, and, and be able to drink a nice cup of coffee. Because I have a lot of coffee meetings, but um, but unfortunately, that person went kind of back in their career field and didn't pursue the franchisee, so, it happens, but.
Next time.
Yes, we'll continue on.
Thank you, any other questions?
Like I said, there's a lot coming.
That's great, we will be looking forward to that. Um, I think if that's it for the economic development. Mr. Grass, you're about the only other city official here, so can you give us, can you give us a brief City Council report and a, and a staff report, please?
Let's see, at their, at the City Council meeting on February eleventh, uh, a previous application that the Commission recommended approval of was the Cunningham Creekmore Third Plat, um, that was approved, um, at that meeting on second reading. Um, so they're moving forward with um, construction, I'm sure putting together the construction documents for that subdivision um, near one hundred and fifty-fifth Street in Madison, the second phase for the Cunningham subdivision. Uh, at that same meeting as well, they approved a one-year extension uh, to the expiration of the Raymore Galleria North preliminary plat. Um, so the developer, as I believe, working with Mr. Tap on a couple ideas there. Um, so the City Council agreed to extend that for one more year, as they kind of iron out the details on that site. Moving forward, on March eleventh, uh, just, I, I believe we mentioned this to the Commission previously, um, one of the projects that we're working on here in twenty nineteen is sort of ramping up um, the, the workings for another annexation uh, attempt, uh, moving into the next coming year, so the, the first order of business was that, of, of that action was to nullify our previous, um, what they would call the intent-to-annex area, basically the area that Raymore was interested in to annex at some point in the future. Um, so, in an effort to pursue that, we've kind of shrunken that area of interest, if you will, um, and so, in order to do that, we had to nullify that previous area, and then adopt the new area, so that project is moving ahead um, here pretty quickly, um, not really anything that the Commission will see here immediately, but um, it's always good to keep you all in the loop, so that you're aware of things that are going on throughout the city. Um, I believe that would be all that pertained to the Commission, uh, as far as City Council. Um, looking ahead at some of our upcoming meetings, I believe I've mentioned before, um, at our April April second meeting, we bring forward the annual review of our growth management plan. Um, so one of the things that will be included with that, obviously, will be the revised maps for the area of intent to annex, um, just to make sure that that document is up to date. Um, so again, just an annual document that we bring back to make sure that it's current and up to date with all the current planning practices, and uh, make sure that the maps and everything are up to date, um, so that when applications come in, uh, we're ready to process those, and to compare them to all the documents that we have here with the city. Um, moving ahead, looking ahead at our April sixteenth meeting, as I'm sure you remember, um, previously, we talked about the annual APA conference um, that will be happening, uh, actually on that day. Commissioner Pfizer and Commissioner Armstrong have indicated, in addition to Mr. Catterett and myself, will be attending that, so because we will not have any staff members, and we will be down to commission members, um, I think it would be a good idea to go ahead and cancel that meeting, um, on that evening, unless, just for whatever reason, you all would like to come here and hang out in the council chambers, by all means.
I'm sure we could make a lot of mischief while you're gone, but uh, Mr. Zerd would probably come keep an eye on us, wouldn't he?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, no, that sounds, if, if, yeah, I don't really see how we'd conduct business without you here, so.
Sure.
Canceling April sixteenth sounds good.
Perfect, glad to hear that. Uh, and then just looking ahead, the, uh, just to keep you all on the loop again, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, we have actually had two applications filed here just this month, um, for a couple of projects that are going on. The first one, uh, if you're familiar with the intersection of Fifty-Eight Highway and J, um, just behind the Casey's, there's that large storage building, uh, that the Bright family owns and operates with the gym and the batting cages. Uh, that, that individual, individual is actually looking at subdividing that property and selling the front building to the current tenants that occupy that space, um, and so to do that, they're looking to split that property off, however, um, in doing that, it creates what we would call a non-conforming lot. Within our, within our UDC, there's standards for how much space or, or frontage that a property has to have on a public road, and by splitting off the majority of that front property, that, the, what's left just simply does not have that. Um, and so that property owner is asking to reduce that minimum requirement, uh, while still providing easement access to the back of the property, so that he can continue to operate his storage facility and storage business that he runs, so that's the first application. Um, the second one, if you're familiar with the Shadowwood neighborhood, um, it's been quite a while since I think we've heard anything in front of the Commission, but they're, they're running out of lots there in that, in that neighborhood pretty quickly, and so uh, the, the developer has asked, on a couple of the lots that exist between Matt, or, I'm sorry, Washington Street and Franklin, uh, they're corner lots, and so because of that, they have a pretty large uh, front yard setback on both sides, and so in order to squeeze a buildable home on those lots, they're requesting to reduce the front yard setback on one side to fifteen feet. Um, three-car garages are becoming more and more popular, and so, of course, to do that, you've got to have more space, so uh, those will be coming here over the next couple of months, uh, unfortunately, with the APA conference, we had to kind of push one of those applications out a little bit further than we had wished, um, but the, the applicant is, is luckily understanding of that, and they're.
Long as they're mad at you and not mad at the Commission.
Exactly, directed all towards staff, usually, is, is the best way to do it. Um, so that would conclude that, the other thing that, that Mr. Tap mentioned, the Dean Commercial Property, um, or the Village at Foxwoods Center, as we like to call it, um, the developer, I believe, if the commission remembers, we had seen that application be continued a couple times, while they were ironing out a couple of the details that kind of surfaced in that, in that project. Uh, they have submitted a full application, again, for staff to, to review, in addition to the traffic study and stormwater study. So, myself, Mr. Rocos are working on that, um, it's anticipated that that meeting, uh, that application will be ready for full review on May seventh, so stay tuned for that, and uh, we hope to have a, a pretty good meeting, uh, on May seventh.
Great.
Uh, that would conclude staff report on my end, um, I'm sure you're.
Anything on behalf of Mr. Rocos?
That's what I was getting into, I'm sure you're aware that he decided to, to take the night off this evening.
Yeah.
Um, just due to the lack of business items, but he did give me a couple items to update you on.
Good.
Um, Hawkeridge Park, as always, uh, construction's moving along, finally have some decent weather that hopefully you can get out there and maybe take a look at what's going on. Uh, the, the shelter building and the amphitheater are very well, very much so vertical right now. Um, they're finishing up some, some grading and some site work there, and you can probably expect some um, trails to be going in, some parking lots to be going in, as the weather continues to cooperate, hopefully, so, a lot of progress over there. Um, some annual projects that they're working on right now, the annual curb project for replacement is currently out to bid, so uh, no distinct timeline of when you can anticipate curbs to be replaced, but um, definitely as the weather continues to warm up, that project will become a little bit more real. Uh, and in addition, they're working on a culvert replacement on Jefferson Street. Um, I believe that culvert is beginning to fail, um, and so just being a little proactive in replacing that and doing some repairs on that. Um, but that would be the extent of what he would like to report to the Commission at this time. Uh, if there's questions on any of that, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Grass, any questions before we move on? Okay. Next on our agenda, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you'd like to speak to us this evening, please feel free to come forward to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Well, thank you for being here, we appreciate the interest, and we'll move on to commission member comment. And let's see. I think I'll do a little bit different tonight. First one to raise a hand gets to speak first. Thank you, Commissioner Wiggins.
We're all ready to go home, so, um, thank you for the report, no additional comments, thank you.
All right, one more hand?
Sure.
Uh, Commissioner Armstrong, sorry, I was looking the wrong way.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, these are gonna be short and sweet. Commissioner Akiya.
I'll be a little more specific, thank you, Mr. Tap, for being here this evening, and your um, ever-interesting presentation on economic development here in Raymore. We appreciate your efforts, uh, even though we don't get to see you at our regular meetings on a regular basis, and, as always, thank you to city staff for all that you guys do, and for being here on a regular basis.
Yeah. Good, Commissioner Peterman.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Tap, for your presentation, it was a rerun of last night, that I got a chance to uh, watch. I'm waiting for that tip of the iceberg to uh, surface a little bit more, but uh, good analogy on that. Good stuff happening, keep the hammer down, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Uh, Secretary Crane.
Thanks for the presentation, uh, my wife and I and the three kids moved down here in nineteen seventy-five, when the twins were still toddlers. Uh, I uh, talk to them all the time, they are amazed at how the town has grown and everything. Uh, I've got a new two-week-old great-grandson, who, in about twenty years, will look at the pictures of grandpa's house and stuff, and go, wow, has this place grown.
Yep, Vice Chair Pfizer.
I would also like to say thank you for the presentation, and I really enjoy your enthusiasm for the subject, I think uh, it's kind of uh, what's the word I'm searching for, contagious, maybe, uh, that was really interesting, so thank you.
Yeah, I will agree with pretty much everything that's been said, and I don't remember that we've actually had any kind of a deep presentation on economic development, we see things piecemeal, and I always feel like Planning and Zoning Commission is the last to find out what's going on in Raymore, you know, I, I actually learn more going to the barber shop, and yes, that's a waste of money, but I still enjoy going to the barber shop. So, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Grass, thank you very much, you're kind of doing triple duty this evening, I think, and uh, probably get stuck doing the minutes too, so thank you very much. Uh, to you all that are going to the APA conference, I wish you safe travels, and hope it's very productive, and feel free to bring back souvenirs, so, hope you have a good trip. Unless anyone has anything to add, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So good.
Motion by Commissioner Akiya, second by Commissioner Crane, all those in favor, put a hand up, and I'm sure we are seven in favor, none opposed, no abstentions, thank you all very much.